You want to go in and bring your own mic?
Yeah.
Well, Matt, we're ordering additional mics. Since this is the new normal.
That's the public session and I'm getting feedback between the two.
It just, yeah, because the public needs to be out there and... I don't know, I'm making these things. Like a reasonable answer.
Okay, so, uh, welcome, everybody, to Kittensett County Public Hospital District Number One. Board of Commissioners regular meeting. This is a hybrid, so we have folks here in the room, we have folks out in the mezzanine, and we have folks at home. So appreciate everybody's patience and willing to come together and have this meeting. Especially welcome IT and Mandy for kind of coordinating and placing everybody, and Julie for making sure we're all appropriate doing our thing. So, uh, we will call the, raise the meeting to order. Our first item is approval... Do you want to do like a roll call maybe, or?
Sure.
Can people see through here who's out there?
Yeah, I just was... Maybe you should like hear what I'm talking about.
Yes.
A roll call would probably be a good idea.
Yeah. Bob Davis?
Here.
Matt Altman?
Here.
Erica Livingston?
Here.
John Ward?
Here.
Jerry Clark?
Here.
Dr. Martin?
Here.
Ron Holden?
Here.
Julie Peterson?
Here.
Scott O'Anders?
Here.
Carrie Barr?
Hello, everybody, I'm here.
Amanda Scott?
Here.
Vicki McLeod?
I can see her name up there, but she's muted.
Andy Olsen?
Andy's muted too.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Michelle Wirl?
Here. I'm here, can you hear me?
So, yeah, just a quick reminder for those in this room, because I'm talking and the microphone is a little bit louder than usual.
Thank you, Mandy.
The, uh, so first item is the approval of the agenda.
I am here. I am here, period. I just can't get my audio on in my car.
Okay, approval of the agenda? Move by Erica, second. Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, consent agenda? Move to approve? Motion by John to approve, second by Erica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. unanimous. Um, presentations, we don't really have presentations, but we will. So we normally do public comment at 5:30. Do you want to do that now, or?
Sure.
Everybody has to do, if we have any, we're going to talk. Linda's out in the mezzanine to take public comments, if anyone's out there that needs to do public comment, do that now. And both, if you can let us know, if someone shows up, we'll be happy. We might as well get someone to, yeah. So seeing a public comment, we'll come back to that in a few minutes too. Um, reports and dashboards. Uh, so we'll start with quality. Uh, Mandy Olsen, Director of Quality Improvement. Mandy, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Can you hear me okay?
Good.
Okay, so, um, I have my report in the packet and the dashboard. Um, I don't have anything in particular to highlight this evening, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Can I just say, Mandy and I had a chance to go the full year 2019 partnership for patients result, which will be coming to you, that just kind of got off the presses this week. But the results for KDH were very, very good again, and again it represents, the latest report is the full year for 2019. Some really good work.
Uh, Mandy, can you be okay?
What was that?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I just had a quick question. In your report, you say, you know, you talk in the opening paragraph about, uh, about how you provided guidance and, uh, you're regarding infection control and employee health standards and things like that, and you say this was fully exemplified in our recent cases of staff members testing positive. Could you talk just a little bit about, um, the circumstances of the testing positive and sort of what was done as a result, things like that?
Yeah, I'll try to, um, share what I can without providing, uh, personal information that we shouldn't provide. But we have had two employees who tested positive. In both cases, the local health jurisdiction felt that their exposure was not from work, it was from where they live, and they do reside out of county, um, in both cases, unrelated to each other. Um, at this point, both employees are better and are back to work, are not restricted from work any longer, and, um, we haven't had any further staff or patients that became infected or converted of the two positive cases. So it was a good partnership between us and the local health jurisdiction in identifying close contacts of those folks internally, both employees and patients, and making sure they were contacted about, um, what to look for and ensuring that with our staff in particular, they were wearing appropriate PPE to decrease any increase, you know, prevent any increased risk. So it was a, it was a good exercise, and it probably will happen again as we see the numbers increasing around us in the counties. Um, you know, a lot of our staff don't just live and work here in Kittensett County, so it was a good, it was a good exercise for us.
Okay.
Mandy, this is Erica.
Yeah.
Am I on, okay. Um, can you describe a little bit about what sort of process employees go through before they're admitted, um, before they're allowed to return to work?
So we follow the CDC guidelines and we work with the local health jurisdiction to make sure that they're signed off. So the standard is, um, 10 days from the start of symptoms and 72 hours after the last symptom. That being said, and that's just what everyone follows. In healthcare, if it would, if it would cause a shortage, a, a critical shortage of staff, they, asymptomatic staff could return to work wearing a mask, and in some cases, although this hasn't happened here, but I know in other industries it has happened, even symptomatic staff, if they're that necessary, have been allowed to go back to work with a mask. So, that's it in a nutshell. What happens is we interview each staff person and talk to them about the amount of time they spent with the positive, you know, patient or employee, what PPE they were wearing, what PPE or cloth face covering the other person was wearing, and how much time they spent with them. Those are kind of the things that are taken into consideration for those that are not positive but may be considered at increased risk for exposure.
Thank you.
I don't know if I answered your question fully.
You did, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mandy? Thank you, Mandy.
Yeah.
CEO, report?
Yeah, um, just some additional items, and then I specifically have some questions for the commission in my report. We found out today and this week about the plan for Lisa Ellenberg School District for next year. So Amanda Scott and Morgan Anderson have been tasked with identifying those employees that this is going to create a particular hardship for, and pulling those employees together to see what sorts of solutions we can help them come up with. So, um, we're not, um, we're, we're trying to ask the individual questions about what the issues are going to be. We know that the school plan looks like kids will be in school two days a week, which will leave parents sort of scrambling, not only with the issue of virtually educating homeschooling their kids to a certain degree, but then those days that kids are home by themselves. So, um, again, I think we talked today, this is heartbreaking news, but we did talk today about, rather than laying out a series of sort of solutions, sitting down with the employees and seeing what sort of help we can give them. It may be bringing five or six parents together and accommodating a day off for each of them during the week so that their kids can, you know, be in one home together. We don't know what the solutions are going to look like, but we do know that it will have, could have the potential for some dramatic impact on our workforce if we don't help. So, um, more to come on that. At the same time, we're trying not to sort of become a de facto daycare provider, so I think it's kind of a careful line that we're going to be walking. So Amanda Scott and Morgan Anderson will be working on that. Tomorrow, the governor's masking policy goes into effect. There's sort of, uh, there's a lot of talk on social media and in the newspaper about folks creating cards that say they're exempt from wearing masks and, uh, which there is no such official card that exempts you from that. We do need to make accommodation, but accommodation looks like we will see you in the parking lot, you can give us a call and we'll go meet you, we'll do curbside, we'll talk to you in the parking lot. That was a point I'm going to make in the air conditioning. So, um, but with, oh, with that... So if someone, if a patient comes in and says, "No," and I, I can't... More likely, and what I see and just saw half an hour ago down in the lobby, is the patient is masked, but... So, um, we may be in a position at, where we're staffing the lobby with security, please, until people figure that out. I really don't have a sense of how large the population is that's likely to push back or what masks likely to look like. I asked today if there were genuine medical conditions, it would prohibit someone from marrying wearing a mask, and most, um, the, what I am aware of that we are accommodating here is really anxiety. So other than that, um, I'm sure we're going to annoy some people, and I'm, I'm very interested in hearing what the board's response to that is.
Notice that the, uh, that currently there's a lot of discussion from the sheriff's office, uh, not in you and this county, but in counties around the state, that they will not be enforcing the masks. The sheriff's department here in town, I kind of like their responsibility because they said that they wouldn't be ticketing people, but they would be trying to educate people about it. And I, I kind of think it's kind of like the day when you couldn't have your cell phone in your car, or back when there was a seatbelt, that must educate people about this instead of, you know, jumping on them right away and trying to get them to go on. So, I, I think that our, our law enforcement in our community is trying to address this and not, you know, make it sound like they're going crazy. Whenever we have a, some type of thing like this, it will take a period of learning to go into it. And I appreciated the, uh, the sheriff's, uh, approach by, uh, talking about education, you know, that they don't plan on ticketing anybody or citing them or anything like that, but they will help educate the community when it comes across people that refuse to wear a mask. I'm kind of curious to see how local businesses will deal with that. Are they going to allow people to come in their door without a mask on? I think that, you know, since they're private business, they, you know, no shoe, no shirt, no shoes, no mask, you can't come in, you know, with that, so.
Is there required to just allow people to come in, I think, on purpose as well?
Right. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of nonsense and noise in the newspaper regarding it, but we need to try to keep people safe. Kittensett County's been quite lucky that we haven't had a lot of cases of the virus here, and I think if we continue to move forward with that, I think it'll be great.
A lot of the same lines about the sheriff's letter, which in glass was published, and was quite kind, I can only imagine how close, kicked on this test would become, if people thought it was their responsibility and obligation to report people who are not wearing masks. Apparently we've had something important happening here. I don't know if it's a training or if it's a...
No, this is the real thing.
Okay. Um, I can only imagine how a multitude of mask complaints with maybe caught up assistance would be delayed.
That being said, I, everything about our relationship with ECD tells me that if our front desk calls and says, "We have someone who's getting loud and aggressive," that they'll be here in a heartbeat. So, um, they are incredibly responsive anytime, anytime a call within the, the city. And we're not here, I, I just don't want to become a nexus of the, the battle of masking, no masking. I think, uh, we've already dealt with one patient who's supposed to be coming in for a test, she has an underlying condition. Linda Navar had a conversation with her today because she said, "I'm not going to come in if you don't make your patients mask." So, um, yeah, I, it's really difficult to tell how much of this pushback is real and how much is just a few people really being amplified on social media and, and in the newspaper.
What I've, what I've seen in the exam room is about as few of the people I see are masked and scared of getting sick. The fewest people I see refuse to mask, and typically, the bus station I saw yesterday showed me the mask that wasn't in dawn had we required it. But it was quite content to sit across the room and make their bed. So, um, uh, it, it's, it's across the board, and I agree, it's going to be interesting to see what unfolds. This one patient in particular was telling me what great respect she has for mental profession and science, but didn't see why she needed a mask.
You know, back in, what you were saying, Erica, about, you know, having people call 911 to report somebody not wearing a mask, the whole, we're lawyer stuff, and I see the direction would be what Julie was talking about. It's not the fact that they're not wearing a mask, it's the fact how they react when they're asked to please leave, but they won't wear a mask, you know, and then they, if they escalate and are exhibiting, you know, dangerous behavior, they have nothing to do with the mask, they have to do with a bad behavior that they're having on their part, you know, which could have happened whether it had to do with a mask or anything else. So I, I think, you know, that's the direction that we're going. Although I'm sure we'll see some interesting things in the local brief about somebody stealing Cheetos without a mask on and looking for somebody with orange fingers after they filled their bag of Cheetos or something like that.
Yeah.
It's interesting, but I, I think that our direction on that, Julie, we've talked about it, is a great direction.
Uh, the, the community is really understanding, for the most part. The anxiety is real, just for a few folks out there. I'm, I'm more sympathetic to our staff, who, eight hours in a mask, it's physically hard.
Yeah.
I mean, it is raining, talking to people all day long, but being in a mask, trying to get fresh oxygen, so feel through the staff that they're doing way above and beyond of having just short breaks without the mask and being patient with patients who are wearing a mask for 15 minutes while they're in them, you know, in the clinic. And I was in the clinic last week and I was like super impressed, not only with the facilities, which hadn't seemed completely, but how it just got in, got out, there was very few people in the waiting room, and it was just fluid, I just like, I feel...
They're, they're doing a fabulous job, and, and to your point, not only is there the stress of, the added stress of wearing a mask, but in places like CTU and ED where they're treating, in the emergency departments, they're treating every patient virtually as though they might be positive, which means dawning and dawling and all the extra, I mean, that's exhausting for them. So we are trying, Vicki's working actively with Amanda to look at what we're doing in terms of breaks for staff, um, when they're really getting worn down. I mean, these, most of these people are 12-hour shift.
Yeah.
That is a long time to be in hot, you know, gowns and, and taking care of patients. So, we're trying to accommodate that at the same time, but you're right, it's very stressful for staff.
Anything else, Julie?
Uh, yeah, a couple more things. Um, I made the, the offer to see if we could restart coffee with commissioners. Is there an interest in, in doing something like that? I know sometimes that you liked particularly, I think, the fluidity of coffee with commissioners, which technology has a tendency to get in the way of. But you could offer it with two of you in a space like this and see if anyone wanted to come.
Do you get the sense there's any interest?
I feel like I talk too much. I feel like we're over-communicating, but talking to me is different than talking to the commissioners. I mean, I think people really like that connectivity in this community with the commissioners. I, I don't know, what do you guys think as far as staff?
I...
And Michelle, community engaging here.
It kind of dwindled, but, you know, it sounded like there was an original, you know, when you first started it, there was a lot of interest, but did it not dwindle as it kind of went on, or how did it, for those of you that have gone through it?
It has been close.
Yeah, towards the end, there was just time, nobody cared. I mean, it's true, uh, we are in unusual times. I think what I suggest is maybe try it out a couple times and, you know, if no interest is, I think.
I find that people don't hesitate to use email if they want to reach out.
So they know how to find you.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm happy to try it if Dave wants to show up, I'd love to chat with him.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I was thinking that once this kind of, our community can open up, it's safer that I, of being interested, you know, at least making the offer to the community, if the community doesn't respond, then they're chosen.
And how often did you guys offer it?
It was monthly, and then we switched to every other month, and then everything was, whatever you did.
Yeah. Well, maybe we pick a couple days this summer and split the groups and just see if anybody shows up, if they do, and we'll do it again a month or two later.
I wonder if people would feel more comfortable leaving if we had an outside venue somewhere? I know I feel more comfortable being outside.
Is there somewhere on the campus that would be conducive to an outdoor?
Or even outdoor?
Well, I think one of the, because, you know, I was thinking about setting it up like a, um, a virtual employee forum that we're doing, but to Erica's point, I, I mean, people want, I mean, this was a way to connect and to know who you were having a conversation with, kinds of thing. So, um, we can look for an outdoor space, um, and... Oh, yeah, that would be nice. But we'll look at, if, if it's something you guys want to do, we'll look at putting something together that would accommodate it.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to, an outdoor, a sit here, as it sounds granny.
And by we, I mean, Mandy we, we'll look at how she... Let me see, COVID clinic is, have been very busy, because we were running 29, 30 tests, um, about nine o'clock this morning, no, 10 o'clock this morning, I talked to them and they had already seen, I think, 18 or 20 patients, so we're seeing an uptick there, so have you talked to them?
Late this afternoon, it was about 33 in the group.
What's changing, is it people feeling the symptoms, or just a fear because they watch the news and see that it seems to be growing everywhere?
So...
Yeah, so I asked if there was a, a particular employee connection, employer connection. There was a little uptick with some Fred Meyer activity, uh, public health, people were being contacted as close contact of an outbreak in upper county, and then, so I think it's, it's symptomatic of phase three, at least early phase three, as people get used to that, is that...
Yes, and the other, um, group was people traveling to Alaska, and now they are requiring a negative, or wish to get off the plane, or however you're arriving, you're quarantined for 14 days. So, another state that I'm considering looking at this as well.
I heard of Hawaii's now doing the same thing. You either show them a test that you're negative, or you're quarantined when you get there.
Yeah, thank you, we'll do, we'll order from the unit.
Yeah. So they're still busy, um...
So funding for that carries through the end of the, is there some help for funding the COVID clinic until a certain period of time, or?
So, we are accumulating the cost so that we can apply to see that to be reimbursed for some of those costs. We also were able to build some of the cares funds that came through public health, and they released some funding for that. I'm not sure if I would say, it, the staff that we're using over there, since we have standard protocols now, is significantly less than it was initially. So, every patient does not have to be seen by a doctor, I think it's lab staff and registration staff, so there's quite a bit fewer people than we had initially. But that's...
EOC.
Yes.
Is it curbside testing now, or do they have to go into rooms?
Um, we're prepared to go curbside whenever the volumes require, but right now, people are going inside.
Are people, are people hesitant to go inside knowing that our exposure increases going inside because, I know I would personally weigh that risk of, is it worth it to go inside where other people who are symptomatic have been? Are people who would prefer to stay outside, are they accommodated to stay outside?
If someone can't go in, or is, is actively ill, um, they will go out to the cars, but...
And, and we have accommodated, we have accommodated folks, this is Carrie, um, we've accommodated folks who have had that, that fear, Erica, but, uh, and so we'll just meet them in the parking lot and, and do the test there, but they, um, for the most part, they can walk in and smell the bleach and see how clean it is, so they're, they're less hesitant once they get past the threshold.
Thank you.
Is insurance involved in that kind? Do people give you their insurance card and so forth?
So, our philosophy was, we do not want finances to be a barrier to anyone getting a COVID test. What we do tell patients is that we're going to wring every dollar we can out of the insurance companies. So we are going to bill their insurance, but the insurance companies in the plan are not, they, their systems have not caught up with the promise that patients will not be billed. So, um, patients are still getting the, the patient portion billed to them by insurance companies, but they have not met their design... companies that they have not met their credentials. Um, there's also, so, so what we've said is if you go to your primary care doc and you tell them, you know, I don't feel good, so I think I need a COVID test, you're going to get a bill for an EMN for a visit. What you won't get is a patient portion for your COVID test. If you go to the COVID clinic, you will bill your insurance, but you will not have an out-of-pocket for the COVID test. And we're trying to get the word out there that there's nothing automatic about it. If you get a bill that you don't think you should have received because of COVID, you need to call us because our intent is to make a patient portion go away after insurance is paid. Is that a...
That's correct. And I would say we, uh, did receive almost $150,000 of cares funds that was specifically related to providing these, uh, these tests. And, and we kind of got set at and reserved and we'll recognize that as, uh, as, uh, provided through, as we write off those accounts.
But we've been very clear with public health and with everyone else we've talked with that our intent, send people to us, they don't need to worry about whether they can pay for the test.
And is our clinic, is it basically focused on active illness or is it an antibody test to know if you have it or is it doing both of those?
We're not doing, uh, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, so the clinical utility of antibody testing is essentially nil. Uh, Dr. Larson's school was better off spending the money on takeout to support local economy. Um, it's, it has a fairly high false positive rate. And what that means is if you have low prevalence like we do here, the vast majority positives you get on antibody testing are going to be false positive. Um, uh, it can theoretically tell if you, so there's two different antibodies, IgM, IgP. IgM turns positive fairly quickly, um, but nobody really knows how it correlates with uh, infectivity. Uh, uh, IgG takes longer to develop, um, and nobody knows how long it can preserve immunity. The latest, um, data I was looking at suggests that, um, the antibodies may only persist a matter of months. And so somebody who was positive in March would have essentially no antibodies by July. We don't, that's, we don't know. You know, right, we're still at the point of getting early data out of China where they have a lot of six-month experience with this thing. It, that is one of the things that's, that's been really amazing to me is we're struggling with our lack of knowledge, but if you compare how quickly we've developed knowledge and technology compared to HIV or even the first SARS virus, um, there we are after six months is mild enough.
Well, in the movie Contagion, they did it in two and a half hours. I just, I just...
They don't ruin that for me, I don't watch that.
It really cut the bar. It is really, it's...
So, so our clinic is just focused on active illness?
Andrew McCoy would pick two and a half hours.
Is that to swallow up the middle of the thing?
Yes, that's the one.
So, if someone gets a bill, they pay the bill, it clears through, we'll refund them?
Right.
But they've paid out.
So, the intent is that insurance pays, but patients are not.
Yeah.
Don't participate.
Perfect.
Um, the other thing, uh, the, the guidance on the good stuff that he doesn't continues to be a bit of a moving target. Um, so we're having to, as is masking guidance and some of the other things. Um, so if we need updates, we update and we unapologetically follow whatever the new guidelines are, so.
What are some of the latest evaluations?
So, um, close contacts who were not symptomatic previously, were, we were not recommending testing. I think the latest local guidance is that close contacts who want to be tested can be tested whether they're symptomatic or not. Did I get that right? Okay.
I'm wondering if we have adequate testing supplies available to us?
Probably haven't studied supply yet.
So, what, so our slobs are, are test kits, if you will. Um, we've, I think, gosh, it's been a month since we had an issue with, with supply. What we're struggling with right now is we have a pretty steady turnaround if we send those out to LabCorp of 48 hours. We have a very limited number of rapid tests that we can do here and it takes about 45 minutes. Um, there's all sorts of promises in the wind about when the volume of, of the cassettes for those are going to increase. So far, we've received one batch of 60, right?
Um, that's all we have, yeah. None received our promised shipment.
We've been promised and promised and promised.
Much more expensive than just one, five, five, four.
Much.
So, this is, uh, this is getting quite far ahead, but we need to do anything to prepare for 8,000 young people coming back in September?
So, I believe we were just invited by CWU to that discussion with public health and we fully intend to be at the table for the public schools and for CWU, for student athletes coming back. I think the NC2A came out with recommendations. Um, again, we're there to say, how can we help? Not to write other people's policies for us. Again, I'm looking at these two. Have I overpromised? Yes, so, okay.
Do we need to, um, shore up our testing supplies before that happens and is the patient in part?
I would anticipate that we're going to. And, um, public health has actually been able to readily tap into large supply, larger, so RELC again has been very, very effective in supporting us, public health. Um, so, so we kind of talk to each other about what the inventory in the county is as opposed to what do you have, what do we have?
Well, central due testing is...
You know, we, we don't, it, the, I believe the public health conversation has been CWU needs its own strategy. That doesn't mean we're going to hang them out there and they have to do it all on their own. So, they need their own strategy that meets their needs. And again, our response is how can we support that? If we need to support them up at the student health center, we will do that. If we need to support them with, you know, by doing drive-through testing, whatever, we'll be there to help. However, CWU or the schools or public health call on us to support them, so. Um, the other thing I, I just wanted to mention, values alignment is moving ahead. I just signed 10 contracts for APC's compositions who've converted to the new contract. Um, and the termination letters are going out to the rest of the providers that essentially say your con, we have at the most 180-day outs on our existing contracts. So, they will all get letters saying it's our intent to continue your employment under the agreed-upon contract. They need now to convert on July 1st, on October 1st, and everyone will be on the new contract on January 1st. Tim and I know Jason is working overtime doing the, the comparables for them and, um, I think all the APCs that have been medicine, already converted. So, we'll see. That is about it for me. I won't steal Dr. Martin's thunder and say that we, we had an offer on a neurologist accepted today.
Can, can we, I just want to go back to the mask real quick because I may get a chance to follow up on that. Starting tomorrow, if somebody comes into the facility without a mask and upon request to put on a mask refuses, what is going to happen?
They will be told.
By who?
By the front desk. The front desk is the first line of... Policy consists of the state's policy. Um, we, sign-ups is coming, Michelle already has it finished, but takes all the waffle out of them. It goes on the front door. They will be told that they need to wait in their car because they're... Otherwise, they're required to wear a mask.
In these unlikely scenarios, somebody refuses to cooperate, then what happens next?
Um, to a certain extent, if they're a visitor, they'll be told they're not allowed on the premises. If it was someone, again, they'll be asked to wear some sort of cover. If they're a patient, it becomes more... Can be invited to wait in the emergency department. The emergency department can't. We do need to... So, we can say, you know, are you here for a lab test or are you here for, but what kind of care for and see if we can accommodate or some sort of curbside. We can talk through, we can have them...
If somebody has to enforce the rule, who's going to do that?
So, that is, um, I am pondering whether we need security lobby for the person.
There are even no curbs. So, if security, in other words, if there's a test that you, you know, barriers that may refuse, at that point, call... It involves physically touching some...
So, our, our, we have contracted with... Um, and I have been really pleasantly surprised with the quality of folks that they provided us, pretty much as the drop of a hat. And we have had Phoenix on-site at the MAPS for cause. We had threats, so we had them, um, come at the, and they, and I believe that was armed security that we had there for a short period of time. Um, they're not going to tackle anyone. Um, you know, they, they typically, when we have an aggressive patient here, we call it a code gray. We had a code gray, gosh, was that yesterday? And I looked over the balcony because it was in the, the front lobby. I looked over the balcony, there's this one aggressive patient and like 30 employees. So, the response to a code gray is everyone responds to the lobby and it's the show of force. Um, and this person was quietly going to think about what they had been told to do. So, it is going to be awkward. There's no doubt about it. Um, I feel pretty strongly that setting our staff up to, to deal with a confrontational situation that we are having awareness of is not appropriate. So, it's one thing if it just kind of happens randomly because people get angry, but we know this has the potential to put a specific set of employees in the, in the way of aggressive behavior. So, I'm inclined to, to intercede preemptively with security.
I, I'm just concerned in this sort of scenario, somebody does it, who maybe even doesn't live around here, just to make a statement.
Right.
Because that's certain percentage of people that just feel this is so wrong, they, they want to force the issue. So, that's why I'm just trying to see if we've thought through some of these various scenarios.
Well, not necessarily. We don't have a long time to, to think about this, so we're just kind of still... And my go-to is always go to the people who are...
Room or two or does anyone left? Yeah, I just, I would hate any sort of scenario if we're not prepared for it, if somebody gets the video they're looking for of us reacting...
Right.
...in any way that can be misconstrued or used in propaganda. And I, I, I think the key thing is if you're printing up the rules to make it very clear, this is the policy we're following.
No, I, I feel the risk and that, and again, I, I never, this is a forced mission for our front office or in our front desk. I, I am inclined to give them an extra layer of, of security until we see how real it is.
Would security act as a gatekeeper and be just allowing people to run it the normal way if they're not masked?
Yes. So, before we had them, we moved them to the emergency department, but before we had them, we're in the lobby. So, it's just, it's troubling that we have to...
Yeah.
...think about it this much. And, and since we started asking for masking, since this has become an issue, it does seem to me we've had more aggressive behavior already at the front desk than with our staff.
Some people feel you've taken around, taken away a fundamental right and it's just visceral to them.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm concerned about.
So, but I'm open to suggestions and we'll work through this with the staff that's most likely to be confronted with these, so.
And the rehab, the rehab staff today had a good way to word saying with patients, if you want to put on a mask, they talked about saying, would you like me to reschedule your appointment to a high-risk masking that is required? Just try to de-escalate it.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, people will fight against this. They'll push out and say, no, I want to be seen now, I have to be seen and I'm not going to wear it. And we'll just have to deal with those that say it hurts.
Right.
Yeah, I like that because it gives them the option. So, you don't need to, well, reschedule it when there's not a mask in front. Today, you, you have to wear a mask, like I'm here.
Yes, they are not going to go to the hospital down the road and not be required to wear a mask.
Right.
So, um, they're, we're not in this alone.
I suspect that most people who have an issue with masking at a personal level are more likely to just fly out and just avoid areas, places where they're required. Uh, I'm not sure if I want to go, but, um, I, I know several people in my own circle who are very vocal that they aren't going to wear a mask. I suspect that if it was for a necessary medical reason, they probably wouldn't, I think, I've talked about it, but I, I hope that the number of people might be coming pelligerant about it.
I, and again, I don't think patients who are seeking necessary care right now are going to, to be those pelligerant people. It's more likely to be someone traveling with them or, and that's what I've seen, is not the patient so much as, as the person, the visitor with them or...
Or what John was saying, that somebody is trying to make, trying to use those as a, as a...
But I have been really very pleased with the, the quality and the professionalism of human security. And as you know, I was, I was, I went kicking and screaming to having security in the hospital. It's very...
Good, well, thank you, appreciate it.
And that's it for me.
Um, I know it's not on our, I'm going to check, but there is a few pages on HR and staff development. I'm just wondering, we're having questions on that. Turning the time over to Linda. Compliance. I kind of like this new, this format that we have here.
I can read it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and Manda has really, um, through all this, no in-person, has really not allowed that to deter her. She's doing virtual training and working really hard to, um, jumpstart our employee development and put together tracks for people.
Who will be attending the customer service training once it holds out? Is it organization-wide?
Yes. Hi.
So, perfect timing.
Yeah, I'm giving a flight. Thanks for coming, so.
So, yeah, welcome and, uh, we'll turn the time over to you.
Okay. So, I'm coming with a request for, for both forms of compliance, 2020 compliance work plan. And this is the annual review of, of actions, specific actions that we, like, that we're taking throughout the year based off of identified risks to participation and following the base of seven elements of compliance program.
the base of seven elements of compliance program. A lot of these are pretty standard for our intention, we have policies to create, so policies which are just standard work in place related to compliance to help guide staff and also, uh, clear expectations of what the staff staff, also ensuring that they understand that they have not to need to understand that there is a compliance program and a compliance officer within organizations that they have opportunity to share concerns that they have and that they will be looked into. One of the things I wanted to point out on page four, actually, page two, if you'd like. And related to page, again, uh, number four, developing investigative language communications. So we do have a hotline phone and we also have a complaint email line as well as they walk in, drop by them or everything like that. We did recently have an issue with a complaint email and definitely that was, was trying to, trying to, that has been involved with many ways that staff can communicate to, to the compliance officer and, um, making sure that we have a, a rapid initiation of investigation to support for people field of. That's something that will consistently stay on here, especially with that noted target of having a two business day. I'll turn around, time's up. One of the new actions that was noted on here is on the bottom of page two, a number five on enforcing standards that are well publicized under guideline, is that it's important that staff recognize where that location goes, of all policies related to the organization. And we're trying to determine what's the most effective way to reach staff and, and give them an opportunity just to be able to attest to that they at least are aware that they, when they have more time, they can go through each policy, who have, asking the directors who have focus points they need to make on things that staff need to be aware, that they can outline that as a PowerPoint type of presentation at this library and then have a direct link to policy. And to continue that throughout the year with this, with this library type of, uh, format, all reported in my place. So that was something new that we included this year on that. The other is on the third page, so on six, on identity monitoring. So we, the last few years has been a, a lot of interest in knowing how well we are, how effective we are. So these things, you know, are always meeting, putting standards and getting feedback to providers. And so we did have an external coding audit then and, um, that's something that's been, in the works for years, and we have that initial information pass on the report. So the thing that the NITELI team is reviewing that initial feedback and then replying back to the internal auditor and then also getting this information back to providers through an initial education. So this is all done, some of the findings, and then they will get an actual report. Something that, again, is supporting that we're educating, making sure what those regulations are with answering questions that they have and doing some PowerPoint checks, having to check the balance of everything. The other thing is the top, which you've recognized, I'm sure, is cybersecurity. So this is one of the areas that will, since they have, uh, monitoring to see if we are effective in our, in our security measures. A lot has been done based off of early feedback from our last security risk assessment. We haven't had a final report yet, but I think that today we are expecting any, any time of this month. And initially, because of this two thousand percent increase by cybersecurity risk that was reported by Jeff, his team has done, uh, just in time, worked to try to address that. A lot of it even has to do with the fact that with coronavirus, having to improve upon , uh, saving our CPM assets. And so a lot of the compliance measures related to cybersecurity are going to be those, um, initial related feedback from that security risk assessment as well as some of the changes with coronavirus to, to, again, external resources, workers, and also telemedicine, things like that.
We, we can talk about having a portal now, should we get that?
Yes. And there has been a delay in getting that final report, it kept getting pushed back and then Jeff is doing a lot of editing elsewhere, saying, we're waiting for this. Because we had, like I stated, the kind of initial feedback from them without the formal org, and that's what they actually, a lot of the special, other, we're going to change our passwords, uh, making sure that we're getting elsewhere, making sure all our remote devices are secured well. And, um, so we should be ready back with a second.
That's, the first one they did is forever to get back.
It is.
And, and again, Jeff, people took the draft that they had and just started following through the draft work and, and didn't wait to the final.
Also, when it comes to staff, you know, especially in the special sites, there are new people coming out, there's a, there's a hot new risk out there, how they're trying to ease all the way towards staff and, like, it's going to be, to develop and, and catch them up. But they're trying to prove. Also, on privacy investigations, again, that's something, I was saying, you know, there's a lot of concerns with, you know, telemedicine, how effectively can we use our security for that, patients have concerns. You know, though we've had reporting concerns so far from the June report with twenty-four of privacy applications, so it's, you know, that's a ongoing thing that we have, a lot of support we can, we can, we can make sure that, that's getting thoroughly, I want this to be so far from that. Do you have any questions about, you know?
So, um, like residents or interns, any volunteers, do they go through some compliance type of, of program before they start? I'm sure it's more abbreviated than employment, but they, they get something like that?
All volunteers would have a privacy education. All employees would have basic compliance, providers have little in hard detail, especially those that are, they could, they could just decisions with it, or the decision makers related, um, to, especially in, for, 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 for vendors and stuff like that. We can do a lot more and there's different ways of reaching out to, to providers of how to get, that better.
Residents go through the same orientation as volunteers, but I need to verify that.
Yeah, nursing students, uh, other interns.
Basically, but not, uh, thoroughly decided to, like, either review. It was more focused on the privacy part of compliance. And, uh, to begin, we're on our own now and, uh, as far as students go, that we've been through quality and compliance, well, we reinforce, you know, what our expectations are for them to be reporting through compliance, with hotline.
In terms of students, we currently have medical students from both, uh, and end up the U of, uh, just signed an accreditation agreement with, uh, Washington State for their medical students.
Nice.
Um, we also have PA students, uh, nursing students, nurse practitioner students. Uh, and one of the things that I'm working on is putting together an organizational structure around medical education so that we have some idea of how many learners we have and what capacity we have. One of the things that you heard about is alignment was what our providers like to teach. And there's great data that says that increases fulfillment, that increased fulfillment increases burnout. So at that point, it becomes something I feel obligated, if we're going to have students, I need to maximize the exposure that our providers give to those students. I can't do that if I don't know where they are or how many, or how many students have on the business.
This is a more effective way to make students have examples, have, uh, data, um, that's part of that, or, or adhere regulatory language and things like that, which is very, try and maybe not be absorbed as well. So anytime we have anything that comes up, uh, that was, like, less than, that would be a good, like, one way, uh, reeducating and finding things out and, uh, fairly frequently, even especially with privacy, just to have, uh, years and, 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 that's more, especially with leadership, which, although, uh, sessions through to be, actually during the morning, I will be comfortable, compliance.
Linda always made us play, play roulette or some sort of compliance game. Kind of a terminology giving.
An interesting, uh, distinction on some of these is the difference between like ethics and compliance, right? So it seems like a lot of the emphasis is on, I mean, of necessity, it's on following the sort of legal requirements around HIPAA and, uh, you know, not misusing, uh, not misusing resources of the organization, things like that. I'm wondering if one kind of point of pride or something that might be noted somewhere is the fact that when it comes to the code of conduct and doing our thing, um, if this, if there's any reason to mention the fact that there's an ethics committee at the hospital that, that providers can consult when they're struggling with that. It's not, I mean, it's, uh, it's a resource that's available, I'm not sure how you would sort of report out on that, but just the mere fact that it exists and is able to talk to this committee, uh, talk through some of these issues, is I think something good for the organization, something that, and, uh, it may be a way, you know, it's, I mean, that may be a way for it to be more sort of publicized and to get more people aware of what they do. I know when I was on years ago, um, and we were always ready to talk to people, but not everybody was aware that it existed. But, but anyway, I mean, I, so I think that's a really good part of the organization and a good resource for providers. Um, and, uh, I was wondering if there's some way to just, that's one way that KGH is committed not only to compliance with existing laws, but to the ethical principles laid out in the code of conduct.
I think that's a good idea.
Sometimes you can have that idea.
Even when they have, you know, um, regional, um, compliance education, you know, don't have, like, the ethics part, because there's, I mean, so, uh, one of the things that we had during, once we blocked, we, not, last year, we kind of had a message, you know, thank you for the right thing, you know, what's the right thing for patients? There's, there's, um, pulling here, breaking, breaking, so, and there is a conflict, and you were lead to have, so where do you go with that?
I think that's such a gave me the opportunity to, to claim a point of pride. Um, we had an issue arise, you know, with a hospitalized patient yesterday, and the ethics committee met at eleven thirty this morning, much to the astonishment of the nation worries the concern, uh, that it would be used to support different people. So, yeah, we, we, this and, and we are, we recognize that if we're useful, we have to be able to respond to those concerns. So.
I remember, I mean, when I was on that committee, yes, years ago, that, uh, you'd hear, you would sometimes hear providers and nurses, or, uh, what I mean, sufficient, your nurses are very qualified providers, saying to other employees, I'll report you to the ethics committee, but that's not, uh, we're not, we're not here to, to knock people down, we're here to consult and help through issues like that. And, you know, I think the more the word is thrown on something like that, the more people think it matters.
So you're looking for the board to adopt all of this?
This would be, this is the final draft, and you want a motion?
So the document has to be updated through a different draft, showing a really big thing. Document is presented with the actions that are noted, with a lot of those actions. All the, that we, from the, please, please, page four, some of the programs.
Motion by Erica, that's right. Thank you, my man. On the paper?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. Thanks, my man.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Martin, this is Steph. So, um, as, as Julie noted, we're not stealing my thunder. Uh, since I prepared this report, conversations happening with a neurologist and a vascular surgeon to become offers made to a neurologist and vascular surgeon, neurologist, so, so we'll get to have that service in place probably late summer.
That's a new, that's a new service, yeah?
Those would be dark.
For us, we've had just very sporadic neurology offered, uh, through doctor from Swedish.
Newsbone?
That was, that was neurosurgery, that was spine specific.
Newsbone?
Yeah. Um, uh, and he would see patients here and do his cases down, or downtown.
But this is not neurosurgery?
No, this is not. Um, so this doesn't involve care consumers bigger than?
That's, I mean, it's a big deal. I don't know if Erica remembers back when she and I were running for the board and then newly on the board, one of the things we hear most is people having wish lists for all the special, uh, specialties they wanted at town. A lot of the time, we've had to say, how is that, you know, for a small community, if there's not that much demand, but having, you know, expanding our services like this, there are a lot of people.
Well, and if you think back to the retreat, uh, when Mitch, uh, presented our staffing plan, one of the things that we've looked at is based on national averages of utilization, how many providers have a given specialty that this community can be with support? And for neurology, it's about two and a half. Um, we're also, it mentioned further on, uh, looking at pathology and dialysis. Um, dialysis is one of the big reasons that we send people out of town. They show up in our emergency room and if they've got a shunt, she can't take care of them. And so that's an automatic transfer that's going to get admitted. Bringing in a vascular surgeon, a lot of work of the day-to-day work of vascular surgeon is coordination with access for dialysis patients.
So just get patients down.
Probably. It's used initially.
Okay.
Um, but, um, uh, if you know any dialysis patients in the community, it's no great secret, I'm a field, that they get really great service from the community. I don't know that there is a certificate of need process around dialysis, if you currently have, uh, seven beds, uh, we reach there twice a day, six days a week. Uh, they basically have a capacity of about twenty, thirty patients, dialysis patients, probably more than that. Um, in conjunction with that, uh, there's pathology, necromy, and elsewhere that we're, that we're working with. So we're really trying to broaden the special, for years, we've been focused on primary care base because the, the drum with access. And we still have a lot of work to do there. Community the size, well, a county the size would support roughly thirty-six MTE primary care. But if you're getting your specialty care also, one of the things when I was practicing in South King County, that used to annoy the devil out of us was, we sent a patient in South King County, that used to annoy the devil out of us was, we sent a patient to Virginia Mason Seattle for a consultation, suddenly that patient stopped coming back to our office instead of getting their primary care, whether it was a treatment. So being able to strengthen specialty care services in the county, I think it's huge. As you point out, it's, it's the, uh, community health assessment, community health improvement plan came to the same conclusion, another specialty that people would want, secret is cardiology. We're listening, one of our general internists, we're interviewing to fill his position and an additional spot for growth. Uh, one of the internists we're, uh, talking to has been doing non-interventional cardiology for most of the career, uh, and is able to do general internal medicine, so to bring that skill to its definition. So, uh, being able to call somebody that has more of one tool in the value of the useful thing.
This is something that I think is always, uh, I mean, why don't they surprise us, how much, uh, we're expanding the services that we provide. Michelle has always been really good about keeping track of this stuff, she keeps track of all of this. But, um, I mean, we, when we came on years, several years ago, we didn't have our own pediatric, uh, pediatric services. Pediatrics, you know, you have wound care, you have dermatologists, and now dermatologists, I mean, EMT, right? It's just, uh...
EMT was from outside.
Maybe we have someone inside, you know?
So, and, and that is, um, Dr. Martin and Mitch and that team has really refocused from the whole idea that we were going to partner and collaborate with the larger systems. That's the fifty-first, fifty-first date scenario that every time we sat down to talk with the Memorial, they were, you know, they, they promised the moon and never delivered. So we really have decided over the course of this adventure that if we were going to build specialty services, we needed to, to do our own work.
Even Swedish was promising, you know, tele, neuro, tele site and, and that were...
Yeah, Ron, that worked out with them.
Although I think I'm still medical director for that program.
You know, if you, if you look back to last month and the revenue shortfall, that was primarily because the specialists that we had aren't working, you know, because of COVID. But you see the, uh, the impact, the impact of being able to do those services. So it's, having additional specialists is, uh, very positive for KPH and EMT.
And now where there is this, like, increased desire for people to stay here, I mean, the community may, don't want to go to Yakima for anything. Even Costco's kind of on that, on the outs. I'm with Martin. My, my wife's been quoting it.
Why? I'm gonna tell you that.
My wife's just been quoting Dr. Larson. I'm like, I can't, I can't do this. So it is a good, I think, a good opportunity that we're, and so with the internal medicine and cardiology, so that's closer for...
The, the big holdup is providers out of the area. She's very familiar with Pitten Pass County, uh, she owns property in Upper County, uh, but isn't as familiar with KPH. She lives out of state and would like to see KPH.
But Dr. Larson said she can't come. So, yeah, so there is, we are, yeah, we are refocusing from contracting for these services and trying to partner to bringing them in town, so.
But we're, I mean, we're having, I think, a pretty big hit with Dr. Dixon. This will be potentially the personal fail-his, partially fail-his.
Well, and it's, it's a good fit because he took that panel over largely from another physician that has a strong interest in cardiology. So there was kind of a selection bias. There are more complicated cardiac patients on Dr. Dixon's panel than on most part of the providers. So it's, it's a natural step in. The other piece is, again, um, uh, we're, we're still, we were originally posting to grow internal medicine, not to replace Dr. Dixon. So even if we did a signature, we're still going to have a position for him.
So what is happening to Dr. Dixon's patients in the interim?
Uh, they'll be seen by other providers in the organization.
In internal medicine or broader than that?
Uh, some of them will select out, uh, that's whatever physician leaves the community. Uh, I, I know of one patient of Dr. Dixon that's currently ongoing to Dr. Casey with family medicine. Uh, and, you know, so there will be a redistribution. That's one of the reasons that, um, it's kind of the opposite of the positive. It's one of the reasons that I want our primary care panels to stay open. Oftentimes, well, what happened when I first came to town, uh, I was very young when I did, um, I took a few new patients, but I largely took over Don Sullberg's panel, so I was essentially closed. The first time we brought a provider in to grow, that was the only open panel in the county. And that provider got bombarded with people who'd been fired from CHCW, had complex issues that they weren't getting addressed, and it was overwhelming. By keeping all those practices open, it allows patients to level load. If they call and say, I want to see Dr. Martin, and here's Dr. Martin's next appointment, it's in six, six weeks, but I can get you with, uh, Dr. Stone next Tuesday, Dr. Stone's going to see the patient, and if I, Dr. Stone, the patient, and then stay there. Um, and that's, that's just kind of the, the way it should work. Patients should be able to choose whether or not we should be following.
We do have some capacity among the remaining providers of internal medicine. We know we have some efficiency to, to pick up with.
And I was glad I was given a letter out.
It had a little bit of vagueness to it, though, that's why I'm bringing this up. Like, my neighbors received that letter and they're a retired couple, and when the transition happened before from Dr. Berger to Dr. Dixon, it was a handoff, so you didn't have to overthink it. Now, if you went in and met with Dr. Dixon, you didn't care for him, you obviously could look for a new provider. But they came to me and said, my, my neighbor's came to me and said, uh, what, what do we do? And the letter left a little vague as to what somebody should do. You could call in, see if you can find somebody else, you could pick somebody else. And, and for this demographic, it, it kind of ground them to a halt. They, they kind of wanted the solution handed to them like it was previously. So that's why I'm just kind of speaking up on their behalf that they, they now get, if they get ill, they're kind of in this in-between and they wouldn't know what to do necessarily unless it was urgent, went to the EORs, so.
Well, hopefully they, from the, from whoever they got, that there still are patients. But we don't have a designated replacement for Dr. Dixon. We do have capacity in the system to take care of his patients. We don't have a single provider that has a completely open panel to step into his. So I hear what you're saying about you didn't give them a, a little, little rigid structure.
Yeah.
But that's because we don't have one.
So my takeaway from my conversation with them was, we're not going to do anything until we have to. There's not, they're not going to proactively select somebody else because they're a little confused as to what they should be doing. If one of them becomes symptomatic or reaches a point where, I gotta go in and have a checkup, then they'll, they'll ring the phone and see what happens. But I just, again, they know I'm on the board, so they came to me and said, can you tell me what's going on here? And, and I'm like, well, you know, this is what I know about it, and it doesn't help solve their overall problem, which is that feeling of not falling through the cracks. And I know they feel a little like, I, I guess we could call in and maybe sort this out, but just, last time it happened, it was so clean. You were Dr. Berger, now you're Dr. Dixon. You know, obviously, if you don't care for anyone, you meet with them, we'll, we'll make other arrangements. But they knew exactly what to do, and that's why I bring it up. I mean, I, I know we're doing the best we can, and we haven't filled that position yet, but...
Wouldn't it still be somewhat claimed if they called in and needed to see somebody? You would pick somebody for them to see? If they called internal medicine, what would they would do? Well, thank you, Gary.
This is, I was just gonna, I just unmuted. Hi, hi, John. Yeah, thank you for the feedback, I really appreciate it. And that's something I can take back to the team, just to be, uh, more sensitive or, or really highlight that piece particularly, that this is, this is not as streamlined as it was before, since we don't have, um, an exact replacement. And then we can get some verbiage around that to, to help the patients and, and guide them to, to the provider that, that they need to see.
Yeah, that's, that's terrific. And I, again, I think it's somewhat demographic related in this case. You know, it, it's just, they just got this sheet that says, your doctor's leaving, call us if you need anything.
I, I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, there are some things unknown, we just don't know, but I thought it was respectful that we said it out before he left, right, because after the fact, or even, I mean, years ago, they're, all right, you're leaving, patients, you're going to be notified, they just won't find out till they have their, their appointment. So I thought it was good.
Yeah, there's, I'm just, I'm just seeing their sound pieces. They have a little bit of fear, anxiety.
Sure.
Because suddenly, their path to what had been, you know, straightforward medical, um...
He thought he was a pretty exceptional provider, or had, he saw pretty high volume, you know, it will be, uh...
None of this is pointing fingers, it's just, I'm merely saying, this is some immediate feedback I got from two patients who were left a little uncertain what their next move should be, yeah.
They can just carry their name and she can reach out to them to help them.
Sure, that'd be, yeah.
Or the, the, I've told people, there's still a phone number out there that...
Yeah, I don't know if I'm explaining it correctly, you know, in this age group, they, they like this routine.
Oh, yeah.
And somebody that routine was disrupted, they can call a number, but it's not communicating with somebody they've dealt with, that they're aware of before. And it's, it's, so I, without a doubt, the, the letter gave you a solution. But if you ever met somebody who's still intimidated by a computer, I was trying to...
The other piece of that is for patients with a lot of chronic illnesses, in all probability they have an appointment with Dr. Dixon between now and his departure. And that's an opportunity for them to say, who do you think I should see? What's your good fit?
Well, actually, that, that reminds me of one thing that he, the gentleman was very frustrated with. He had saw Dr. Dixon the day before he got this letter, and not one word was mentioned to him, and he felt really blindsided. You know, I, he's, I just, that was less than twenty-four hours ago, and he obviously knew, how come, how come I wasn't told in the room where I could ask some of these questions? And again, it was just a timing thing, just bad luck when he had the appointment when the letter went out, but, but again, as a board member, so he's unsure on the board, you're going to hear about things like this, and it was, there's no anger, no, it was just a little anxiety, like, what, what should we do? And so I said, I would investigate a little bit, but I think, again, calling that number and starting this process will lead them to a solution, so.
So once again, it seems like, sorry. No, go ahead. Looks like Lisa Potter has got enough to do. I'm going to, I see she's with us here. If it would change your desk and not letting you go home, could you please just indicate somehow?
Like, I'm on the wall.
Because, everything going all right?
Yes, everything is going well, thank you. With, especially with neurology and vascular, that's gone particularly well this week, so it's good.
I owe you twenty dollars.
And we could, we could keep a nephrologist busy if we were able to...
If, if we have dialysis, we'll have to have some sort of relationship, whether it's a part-time relationship, um, as a medical director kind of thing, but it would be massively useful to have somebody that we could pull, especially with, um, the ICU patients that perhaps needs to keep dialysis.
I mean, how, what's the, what is the numbers we're talking about? I think you mentioned something along these lines there.
Uh, I forgot off the top of my head what the number of nephrologists this community could do or could support is, but it's, oh, on the order of one.
Again, you reached out to Dabida and then a medical director, right? Was that anything successful?
Well, no, it's gotten, at least actually, definitely. So there's conversations there, we're also starting to talk about what's getting centered. Dialysis organization in the nation, based in Seattle, uh, close, and it's more than that. They are a re... House news. Here, here, my heart, I like to call a project, uh, it's very hard to tell the answer. So there's that conversation with the university, who is, you know, looking at, uh, some... model for, um, long-term care facilities called Greenhouse Project, which focuses on smaller units, um, across the country. They've been licensed as assisted living, as skilled nursing, as long-term care. Um, I think there's going to be a real opportunity to, and our role in this is a catalyst, we should be, aren't looking to give the operations assistance. But, uh, if you can imagine, if like your center of a person had been ten, twelve-bed units instead of one, hundred and twenty beds, infection control would have been much easier, outcomes would have been very much different. So that, so another piece is something called, uh, MAGIC, which is multiability, multi-generational inclusive communities. Uh, typically, those look like a continuing care residential campus, uh, which gives an assisted living capacity and skilled nursing capacity still located, and people would pay upfront and move between them if their needs change. There's a subset of that is called university-based retirement communities, where, there's a few dozen of those around the country where in conjunction with a university, uh, there's housing set up that houses both students and elders. Students get pretty low in board and exchange for thirty hours of service a month for the community. Typically, there's a price rate for alumni and, and alumni. Then there's, there's all...
The CW's been talking about something like that.
I've been talking to him. Well, I, I've only been talking to him for, for four and a half, but that's not the thing here. But, uh, and then the last piece of it would be, uh, a hostage care facility, and one of the partners in this is Hostage Friends. And they'll probably want to be the lead partner for a lot of this work. But that's something that, uh, I actually have talked about this enough that I have people offering to donate ones to give a good structure set up around it. Uh, when Partridge in the Meadow was built in Yakima, the community need was such that they were able to bill and construction money before they broke down. I think that you would have, I, I think we could expect that kind of success here.
So geez, when it says continual housing, it sounds like there are about ten, ten per option?
Well, that's the point. And, um, so, and, um, uh, I've, I've got a deck that I can share with you about both lives, but, uh, I think by combining them, philosophically, there's a meaning there because you're, you're, it is about choice and autonomy, and about allowing you to have choices with best secret needs and being able to support that safely. The other piece of all this is building technology and to support greater independence. So... So, there's been technology around for about 10 years now around passive monitoring so that the house can call somebody if he fall. Or the house can remind you to take your medicine or a shower. Uh, and what is, what possibilities do autonomous vehicles have for preserving the freedom of our elders if when they get to a certain age, instead of taking away the parties, you just take away the experience? So, that's kind of what, in fact, frankly, is the stuff that Don Silver brought me here four years ago to start working on. And now it's starting to be, you know, um, delighted.
Thank you. Um, anything else, Mark? Questions more?
All right, Mr. Olander. Thank you. Well, I have a, a much better May report than April. And, uh, we, uh, nearly all of these statistical numbers are improved. And, um, we, as, uh, as I mentioned, Dr. Martin was talking about the shortfall. Most of the difference that we make has been the ancillary services, uh, provided by our specialists. General surgeons, orthopedic surgeons, uh, GI, Dr. Fan's GI and, and ENT. So that, uh, that is, uh, those, those reasons are why the, uh, you know, we went from a, over a $5 million revenue shortfall in April when we could do those procedures to a, uh, a $1.3 billion revenue shortfall in May. So, uh, so you can really see the emphasis. So this, uh, this, this expansion of specialty services really is, uh, will serve our community well, but also will help, uh, the organization financial sustainability and viability. Um, there was, um, uh, just say on the other operating revenue, my report noted that we, we, uh, uh, recognized, uh, about 1/8, uh, the CARES money that we received, you know, as revenue. And that was a little over $600,000. So that is, that, uh, other operating, that, that revenue is, was the primary reason. Uh, one of, one of the major reasons that, uh, we were able to report a, a positive operating net. And then the other initiative that helped us significantly is, um, is the voluntary contributions by employees with PTO and, uh, and retirement. And then some of our vendors also, uh, you know, we had been running, particularly in the labor area, we had been running negative, uh, variances, uh, expense variances. And this month we had a, uh, just a, a positive expense variance with, uh, with the, uh, labor. And, uh, and so that, uh, that contributed significantly to, uh, being able to report a, uh, a positive operating net income of $230,000. And then that made it all the way to, uh, to report $200,000.
Yeah, Scott, sorry to interrupt, but, you know, that might be something, I mean, that's really, uh, quite amazing. I know Julie has been, uh, talking about how impressed he is with, with, uh, how, uh, KBH employees has kind of stepped up under circumstances, things like that. I wonder if after, you know, after June, after all the, uh, uh, where the, the voluntary wage and expense reductions stopped yet, given, I wonder if there's, maybe this is for, uh, the show or something, some sort of thank you, or a, a sort of, I mean, we're not through the three words yet, but, uh, but one of the reasons why we're able to come out of it fairly well is because, in many parts, because of all these employees. I think that's just.
No, absolutely. And I, I think, um, you know, to your point, we're not out the end of this. And I would just also sort of flip that and, um, share with you just how many employees have, um, have voiced their appreciation of the board's commitment to, but making this a voluntary effort. Um, where other places were really just pulling that layoff and furlough trigger. So it, it works both ways. And I do think if this is a demonstration of our employees really appreciating the board reaching out, um, having the faith in our staff and our employees here to help us get through this phase. Um, the vendors, uh, again, the biggest problem we have with the vendors is that we were pretty much the only hospital that went to vendors and asked for concessions. So they've asked the police to not advertise them. So, but we got hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of confessions from our vendors. So.
Some of the other hospitals that broke up, the collaborative, heard about this, and so we have, I have shared some of the, just the general generic letters of how we approached vendors about it, both via letter and, uh, it was not just via letter. It's usually the individual in the organization that had the relationship with them often, uh, called them and said, you know, you know, everyone's aware of what is happening with COVID and the impact, financial impact to every organization. And, uh, and so we, we just made the ask verbally and, and writing also. And they're very generous and supportive.
Amanda and her staff have just had a whole, a, a, a number of tools to use in working with staff. And from PTO to low census, the data accrual to retention. Um, and at a time when people's staff was losing their jobs and when people were being furloughed all over, the flexibility to work with people, I think, just got us so far. And, you know, it's, it's easier to make a decision to lay off and furlough than it is to enforce it and see them turn from it because those costs have a tendency to creep up and, and to come back. I think we really, really well with this approach.
In addition to that, the approach was really good, but I think it also has helped, uh, across the board employees focus on expenses. One of the, one of the comments about, uh, you know, I see this morning was, can we start by white, whiteboards and other things again, you know, because we're, and people have been not buying anything, you know, just, just the essentials. And, uh, so, and the answer actually was, well, no. No, we're, no, we're going to hold off till we're done with the voluntary.
I know you guys are very good about, uh, about appreciating, uh, employees at, at KBH. Um, if, obviously, if, if the board needs to do anything to, to help that, but, yeah. Yeah. Uh, sorry, Scott.
Oh, no, thank you for, you know, I would like to, on page 32, you know, we, we had a very good piece of profit, loss, revenue, expense statement to put on the page 32 in the financial stability. The, uh, our day's cash on hand improved significantly also, and that was due to the, the CARES funds that we have received. So, in the last two months, we've increased our liquidity by, uh, over 30, 30 days, uh, cash on hand. And then in addition to that, um, while, uh, the board a couple of months ago approved the resolution allowing us to obtain a line of credit with the bank, and, um, Julie and I signed that credit line for, with Cashmere Valley Bank. So in addition to, uh, the, the cash in the, on, in the banks, we have the, uh, ability to access a $5 million line of credit as, if, if we need, need it. So, good to see you now and improving balance sheet. I, I will say, I felt like we, our revenue cycle team got, uh, a little bit of the short straw with, uh, they, uh, uh, last month, they, uh, they, they reduced AR by $4.3 million. We got credit for three days. And this month, they, uh, they increased, the AR increased by, uh, $1.3 million. And they, uh, got nine days of, and days in accounts receivable, but, uh, you know, it's just, it's a measurement device to let you know where you're at and, uh, it'll, it'll smooth out. Questions about the, uh, finances we made?
So, um, you know, looking at clinic visits, considering all the disruption that maybe carried about with the question too. I mean, we're not down that much compared to year-to-date. Right? Are, are we still seeing, like, have schedules been reduced to try to kind of loosen things up a little bit to create spacing? Are we still seeing patients at a normal template, normal schedule? Uh, and just be, or, I mean, it just seems like the, the clinic visits are higher than what I would expect.
It's becoming near normal. So, Mark, do you want to?
We have not, we haven't, uh, we haven't changed the templates, just to be really clear. So the templates have remained the same. Um, and we are finding that there is some bottleneck with how they're checking in, how the patients are checking in since they're out in their car and we're trying, so we're still trying to streamline that. But, yeah, patients, um, patients are still coming in. Uh, and then the telehealth visits are also counted in, in those visits, I believe, as well. And so, um, thanks to Jeff's team, he got all of that launched really quickly for us. And we were able to use that technology fairly quickly after, um, all this happened.
Yeah. Did you have a comment, Mark?
I'm looking at the, uh, drop off in, in deliveries and babies here, and I'm wondering if this is a big phenomenon? Apes disappeared and frogs disappeared. Did the babies disappear too, or?
They've been holding longer.
They delay. Is this just a, an unexpected lull, or?
I suspect we'll not be able to work with them.
We're starting to tip out. Uh, June has been a, a better month with, uh, I do think, um, when it's all set and done by the end of the year, we've got some, uh, really good OB providers. And with all of the, uh, the COVID issues down in Yakima, I suspect there's going to be, uh, women that are choosing to stay close to home and have their babies. And, uh, it's, I don't think there's, we're, I don't know, I don't think we're losing things in delivery.
Just an aberration here?
You know, the, the budget tent is kind of spread on a straight line in terms of, and it will be fine by the end of the year. Um, there is a, a report, uh, with Mitchell, our grant writer. He's, uh, he's, the, the daycare discussion that, uh, Julie had mentioned, there is, uh, he's working with KBH on a, uh, a, uh, a potential, uh, funding for childcare and then some other, uh, grants. And then, um, we had, uh, one, uh, capital request. It's a subject, uh, molecular instrument, uh, for a cost of about $179,000.
Can you say that number again, Scott? Mark, can you say the price again?
I said, I said 179, 79, excuse me.
Okay, I went up a lot since Tuesday.
Thank you. 79.
Sorry.
No. $100,000. And, and so this is, uh, this is a, a piece of equipment that we were going, uh, we're planning to purchase as we do our lab expansion. But this will allow the hospital to do, uh, uh, COVID testing within, within an hour if, if the reagent is available. And there is, uh, some question about whether, how soon we'll have that, that reagent. And, but, uh, there's some other, uh, there's other, uh, movement drugs, CDS, flu, uh, chlamydia and MRSA tests that are available with exist, existing, um, uh, reagents, with existing reagents. So, this is, uh, this will, these are current, these tests are currently sent out and with, to lab court. And so this will, we'll get a turn, one hour turnaround time for these tests. So this is, uh,
And this is another one of ours. We do have the ability to in-house CDS, whether it's a full biopharma GI panel. So we get a result in 45 minutes, you know, it's $100 bill. But you're testing for 20x20, that's a good one.
So this is also a CPR, what Ellen?
Uh, I'm not.
For the COVID? Yes.
Okay.
For the.
Is the CPR procedure? No. Looking at those probably.
So we're, we're pumping this purchase as if I remember this story correctly, because it does have the potential to bring some more of the COVID testing in that. Um, we were going to include this in the project because it would bring the rest of the panel in-house at the reference lab. So, this is, this gives us an opportunity to perhaps implement the COVID.
And this piece of equipment has some lead time, like we ordered it tomorrow. We're still not going to get it for several months, I believe, that.
That is correct.
And it was, did go live by our committee.
Yeah, we had a good discussion about it and it, uh, fairly makes sense based on our discussion. Especially with the COVID situation.
The reagents, they will come, right? It's, it's just a matter of when?
I think it's the backlog because of the demand off worldwide or at least in the United States, but yeah.
And so they are, you know, right now they have existing customers. And so the reagents are being shipped to their existing customers. And as they're able, they will bring on new customers and ship the reagents. So we don't know when that.
But we want to get in that line.
We want to get in the queue, yeah.
So it's unlikely that a year from now, we'll be looking at a pre machine that's still going to use. That's not.
And when, even if we can do COVID, it will, we can use the other, do a, get a test with it. So it's, it's, it will, it will be used.
So there's a variety of reagents to, okay.
Well, we have a request. Um, do we have a motion to, 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 uh? So, motion by John, taken by, um, Erica, all in favor?
I agree.
No, closed.
Thank you. And I did pass out one additional, um, document that was, uh, that was presented to, uh, Paul and John at the, uh, uh, finance committee. And it relates to, uh, um, kind of some general goals and principles related to, uh, what we expect from our, uh, insurance payers. And, uh, and then it also talks specifically about, uh, a payer. And then it provides some, uh, some analysis. And I guess the, the first, the first goal of, uh, that I would emphasize on the first page is, we want to work with insurance providers that, uh, have the same values that KBH does. And, and one of our values is, uh, and goals is that care should be, people want to serve patients in our community. We want care to be provided locally. And, um, Kaiser is a plan that directs care to the least expensive option, regardless of, of whether it's the patient or not. So when we enter into a contract with a payer, you know, they make assertions about the amount of business involved that they'll bring to you. And, uh, since, uh, we've entered into this relationship, uh, we, we believe and know that, that there is some care that's being diverted away from us or, uh, out of the community that happens.
To keep them within their own system.
To keep them within their own system, yeah. And, uh, and then we, uh, the second point is that we feel like it needs to be relatively competitive that no one insurance, uh, provider should have a, an advantage, significant financial advantage over another. And so we want things to be within plus or minus 6%. And the reason for that is just that sometimes the timing of when the contract cycles come up, so you can have some variance. But all in all, we want them to be basically compensating the hospital at the same rate as all the other plans. And then the last, the last point on this, on this goal and objective, uh, number 12, the insurance contractor should be in network with neighboring acute care hospitals such as Confluence and to be on the other side of Yakima, that KBH transfers many of its patients. And this is, this is a significant issue because, uh, it appears, uh, Kaiser, about three years ago, uh, they had partnered with BM Seattle and protected most of their patients to the, the BM system. They put an RFP out and, uh, made a change to away from BM Seattle to the province, uh, province Swedish system. And that was before the affiliation of BM Yakima and BM Seattle. So now essentially Kaiser Seattle has, does not have a contract and Kaiser Yakima does. So if there's a patient in Yakima that needs care and they want more advanced care and they want to send them to their affiliate and providers that they know in Seattle, they're unable to do so. There is a high probability that Kaiser is going to, or BM Yakima is going to terminate that, their relationship with Kaiser. And if that happens, then we would, the most, the quickest referral source that we could have for an MI would not be the 30 or 40 minutes to Yakima. They'd have to go an hour over to Confluence or to Swedish. And then, so the, so this is, these are some, some notes that are being contemplated. And we're considering, considering reaching out to HR departments at CW and other local employers and let them, letting, advising them that we will, in probably the next 15 to 18 months, not be in that with Kaiser to make, make plans and inform their employees so that they can select a different.
Would we communicate to them, at least at Central, would they be communicating with their employees about the risk of having to go up to Confluence instead of Yakima? That would, I mean, this is like a crucial point of consideration.
So our role in this would be to cancel, give Kaiser notification that we were canceling the contract. And I think we have to give them 12 months or a year to do that. But we, knowing that they're a large commercial carrier in Kidde Taff County, we would notify the HR department, have those conversations, let people know why we were making that decision.
Yeah, I think that, that's the right, that's the right answer. Because you and I talked about this during the, you know, gender review. It makes all kinds of sense to, to, you know, stop this relationship. Like, but KPH has most of the, has most of the providers in town. And one of the alternatives doesn't accept insurance. And the largest employer, then a big chunk of the people there have Kaiser now. So what we want to do is avoid someone being surprised that suddenly they're not, they had prior and this is now out of network. And so just any way we can, we can have that communication clear and obvious will be good. So that we don't have suddenly several hundred people wondering what that just happened. And it does, the individual market too gets impacted. That did, we often, I also.
Yeah, and it's, we don't want to surprise people. We also, I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to strategize how this is not our fault. I mean, and I, we're the only ones that are going to answer the phone when this comes up. Kaiser is not going to have people answering the phones. And, and so when people get upset and get angry about this, we have to frame it in such a way that they understand this is not purely a financial decision. This is a, a decision about the care. This is a decision about the niles of care that we're seeing. So again, we don't, we, I think we need to, to proceed with the community in mind, which is what we're trying to do.
I think too, from Central's perspective, if I understand how this would play out, we would tell them prior to open enrollment for this upcoming year, because that would give them, we're basically telling Kaiser 12 months from now, we're no longer going to have a relationship, which would then fall in September-ish of 2021, which means an open enrollment coming up in a couple of months. As people choose their plans for 2021, Kaiser couldn't legitimately offer a plan knowing that in September, they would go out of network and would have no hospital in network.
I don't think we're, we're going to have to find out what their network adequacy requirements are.
So patients would know that if they selected Kaiser, they would have to leave the community in their care.
So I, I think that's, again, looking at CW as a very large employer who uses Kaiser to educate the staff and faculty there, that when they go to choose a plan for this upcoming and open enrollment, choosing a Kaiser plan, they leave them mid, mid-year out of network for this thing. So it's, again, I think it's just making it clear and making sure they have an acceptable option, which again, I, I think currently they have Uniform Medical, which is another option in this community. So it's, it's, you know, the work has to go, like you said, reach out to the HR department and make the message really clear that it's back to values and some other things that we've made this hard decision. Make sure your staff and faculty know that.
Yeah, no surprise.
So even though we've, we've tried to negotiate with them and tried to give them one of our values, they really haven't responded. If we, if they come back and say, okay, didn't know you guys are serious. We're willing to make some changes.
It, it really isn't purely financial. Yes, they need to move in terms of the rates that they're reimbursing us. But it also has to do with their behavior. And they are creating. And we provide those services. But then when they go to get those services, they're told, oh, no, you have to go to Spokane. You have to go to Overlake. You have to, so, so it, it, there are real barriers that Kaiser creates for our patients. And I have not, I have yet to talk to a medical professional that is not experiencing the same thing with Kaiser in their own practice.
And the barriers to this, for our hospitals, our local pharmacies also see barriers too. I see patients that have a Kaiser plan and they may get their prescription filled once at their local store or their local pharmacy where they get their care. And all of a sudden, now they have to have a ban order in some place. They have to come to stuff like so. Or Kaiser's taking their medication off their formulary, constantly changing. And so it's like Julie was saying, they deny of care. Something that's constantly going on with Kaiser. So, you know, making this change here is going to impact, I think, the care throughout the whole community. And it does cause a lot of impact to providers because you get a patient that's stabilized on the medication and is doing quite well. And all of a sudden, Kaiser requires a lot of prior authorization and stuff that, and the medication, it's kind of an odd moving spending as opposed to having a continuity of care for that patient. So, you know, depending on that, I think in a positive way, the care for our patients and a positive way for other, other members of the community. And can we do the same thing, not just for the university, but for other, for others, you know, smaller companies or organizations that are?
So my expectation, and I'm not sure, I'm sure that the man that Scott, is that our, our patient financial services folks will identify which employer is Kaiser. And using our own HR folks and our finance folks will reach out and explain to them what we're doing, how can we help, how can we help message this? But explain to them exactly some, some of the reasons we think this is important for us.
Do we do that before or after we've told Kaiser what's happening?
Well, Scott and I were talking about that. And I think Scott wants to be fairly transparent on this Kaiser.
But when we were with the past Kaiser was an option here at KPH. And when we viewed the options for coverage, nothing about Kaiser seemed appealing, not even the rate. What is it that would, the vessel would choose Kaiser to get? Nothing on this seemed appealing.
There's, there's people that really like it.
Well, if their providers are preferred provider, you know, and there's, because there are.
In this case, you know?
Yeah, like Dr. Manny was a preferred provider.
I think that, that's kind of part of the education piece. And if one of the school districts or somebody comes up and says, well, our folks love Kaiser because of this, then we can see how we can help fill that gap.
Yeah, I get it.
I thought it would be a lot cheaper or something.
I think it's branding too. It's a very well-known name and people just like it grand. I don't know. But I agree, I mean, if you look at the numbers, it's a very. They had a lot of changes when they merged with, took over Health.
And, and I still maintain, I think that Kaiser model probably works really well in a densely populated urban area where they own the hospital and they own the provider. And they can make everything work under one roof, one medical record. When they start contracting stuff out and trying to squeeze those same margins out, then it's the patients that get caught in the little running around to whoever the cheapest provider that week is. So we want to let you know that. We will, again, this is financial, but it also is very much value driven. And we'll bring the HR folks in the community along this much.
Like you, like you said, Julie, that if there's a problem, I mean, they're not going to be, Kaiser's not going to answer to the patients. I'm not sure that, that patients are going to talk to their HR department, say they weren't properly informed. So it's just, they're going to come to us. And we just need to, I don't know, I don't know what we can do to get the HR people to do something. Well, we, we, we know which patients have Kaiser. Could we send them a direct mail once you make this official and say?
We can run a list, we can run a list of patients and communicate, develop some communication.
Because I think, yeah, the share of this decision-making process, that it's not just dollars, it's value and it's concern for, that they get care here local where it's available and adequate.
And that's just going to be valued delivered. I think that.
I agree. Any way we can talk directly to patients. You know, there are increases transparency or like that. Yeah, next to the goals and principles and the, you know, contract issues. Yeah, this is really helpful.
And that is, that is all I have.
Thanks. Operation.
Vicki?
Vicki's here and unmuted, according to, I think that.
That's according to her call.
Is that one?
Yep.
Yes?
How about this? Can you hear this?
Hi Vicki, welcome.
Hello, hello. So page 39 is my report. And I don't really have a lot to add to that, that I'm, I've turned to think, but I think it's pretty up to date. So if you have any questions about any of that or anything patient care related, I'd be happy to, to answer those questions.
Vicki, this is John. I just, I'm curious how the two-week scheduling is working. Are patients understanding that it's, we're able, when we're two weeks out, to continue to fill those slots in the days that's on?
Yes, that has been working really well. And I know the clinics, you know, there's a few little hiccups occasionally, but they're able to iron that out. Most of the patients understand. They, they know kind of the status. And if they have questions, we're just transparent with them and just say, we don't want to have to shut, if we have to shut things down due to the pandemic, then, you know, we want to do as minimal inconveniences as we can. They're, they're been pretty understanding. And maybe, I'm not sure how the clinic end of that is perceived, but from our end, it's working well. The staff were a little concerned about scheduling, as far as scheduling for staffing. But we've ironed out those wrinkles too and are able to come to a, a process that seems to be, to be working.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So Vicki, on the food and nutritional services, obviously with the being, you know, a different location, I'm sure we've seen quite a decrease in utilization. And we talked about that at prior board meeting.
Right, that's correct. It's, it's proven to be true. But that is what it is because we haven't opened our cafeteria at all either to the public. So that makes an impact as well as the, the move of the off-campus.
And the salad bar?
The salad bar.
Yeah, right, right, yes.
So that's hard to tell with between COVID and staffing movements, what it's what. Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Vicki? Thank you, Vicki.
Thanks, Vicki.
Welcome.
And.
Yes. So my wonderful update is that at Seminarian Clayelum, our physical therapist did accept our job offer and he'll be starting on July 13th. So we have a special therapist up there. The room is all equipped and ready to go. And Joe, our current therapist, has been using it and just loves it.
What, what is the start date for?
July 13th. We have a waiting list of patients up there.
We are not arguing about where now.
Hopefully not. Any other questions for me?
Just the patients at the MAC, we say it's, it's getting pretty full because we're back to normal numbers. And how, how are patients responding to how we're structuring? Is it they, they can't go, they have to wait in a, in an outside waiting room or what?
Yeah, they're waiting in the lobby. The waiting room is so small there that for social distancing, we've had to take out all the chairs except for two. So it's very limited. And so that overflows them into the lobby and you may get five patients standing around. If you had those five patients waiting downstairs like we used to, they don't perceive that as being so busy and the wait time is horrible. But Scott added on registration staff, so we'll have two down there registering. We currently have three plavotamins working. And we were originally given two draw stations, two rooms to draw blood. And we've taken over that rapid access portion. So we have the other two rooms, so there's four now. So we're working to approve it, but it is, it's fine.
Yeah, thank you.
We've actually started to do some of the, there's a few patients still present here at the hospital and that we're directing them down there. And we've, just a week ago, we, we're doing them here now. So they, that's how we, welcome.
I have a question about pharmacy and obtaining a visitor gear. Are we getting just a small amount? Are we getting everything we need and are there any reasons that we couldn't get it? Yes, for our patients, for our senses of coming patients.
The allocation is really determined by the state. So we've had enough to treat probably two patients because we typically have a lot very many patients. And in fact, we just gave up the majority of our supply today. We kept three doses in house and the rest we sent to the place because they had a critical need. But the hospitals are, are all cooperating that way. If we've got it, you need it, you did it. If I need it, I did it. But it's self-coordinated through Washington State Partners Health.
Well, I anticipate out of county, I love this time, I'm sorry, I'm trying to set basis. As we advance in our phases and we're in phase three and I'm probably in the second one, we're progressing, and the need increases. Is it, are, do we anticipate that we'll continue to be able to meet that need?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it's been free for us from the manufacturer, which is.
I'm sorry, it's been what?
Free of charge from the manufacturer of the drug. So they've been very generous to provide that. And I'm sure it's helping their research and, and if I could see, you know, the drugs, to get it approved by the FDA, you know, just the emergency. So it's beneficial to them.
Real question is whether we have enough hydroxycourcine. I guarantee we do.
We have it for the people who need it when they're auto-emitted.
No, the White House might have sent it all over.
Yeah, the, the, I guarantee we have enough hydroxycourcine for all the.
Yeah, there's, there's the, uh, I, I guarantee we have enough hydroxycarb control to go. Drugstore sailors, that, uh, they respond with, uh, their supply is good, nobody's out there. It disappeared, uh, immediately after the first, uh, first conflict. Uh, it's come back in again, so, uh, the people that are really needed for the FDA-approved, uh, conditions, they, they have, they should be able to.
There were a lot of people rightfully concerned about what, I mean, people have been on the front of the condition. I thought they were going to be able to kind of.
I know, I'm just saying, uh, Coltacine has been a drug that's been kicked around now because recently, I'm waiting for the Coltacine, uh, uh, supplies to disappear. Uh, that old, old drug.
It always costs us.
It's an old, old drug that recently went back on path.
Yeah, I know. Worth billions of dollars now.
Yeah.
Um, anything else?
No, thank you.
Any other questions for? Uh, Carrie?
Hello, um, I have my reports. And the only thing I would add to my report is that we have Zoe Carlson, who has been with Family Medicine Cleellum, um, for five years. And her last day is next Tuesday. She's retiring. And so wish her well if you happen to stop in at the clinic on that day. And, um, so that's the only addition I had to my report. And then I will take any questions you have.
Uh, Carrie, I have a question about the direct patient scheduling. Cause I went on and checked it out, it looked like it's, uh, going to be a great thing. You said you're still working out some kinks. What are, what if any issues are we still figuring out with that system?
So the one, the one kink that we ran into was particularly around specialty care. So with primary care, it's pretty slick. Um, the templates are really clear. It's really easy to go in and select the appointment. The templates are easily defined with those appointment slots. However, when you're looking at specialty care, there's a lot of times where we leave a template. Um, it's called open. So there's no, there's no particular, um, appointment slots for the patient to then grab. So we had to, we had to do a little workaround with that and figure out how to make that happen so that, that patients can still make their specialty care appointments as well.
Excellent, and is that all currently done on the website? Or is there an app being created for it?
Cerner does have an app and I think it's, it's called Healthy App. And, um, so it is, it's a way for you to access not only your patient port, all your patient portal information, but also to be able to access this scheduling.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If, if somebody, um, if somebody doesn't have access to the portal, but they're interested in a DCS, are they able to gain access to the portal without being here in person? Can they, can they call somebody and get access to the portal?
Yes, you can call the front desk, um, at any of the clinics and, and ask to be enrolled in the portal.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The new phones, when are they coming?
The Cleellum phones, we are weeks away. So, um, again, I thanked Jeff earlier in today's presentation to the board. And I'll thank him again. Him and his staff have been up there, um, and laying out all of the technical components and getting ready for implementation. So I heard two weeks, but even if it's within the next two months, we're, we're just thrilled to have that, um, put in.
I think Jeff was saying the phones and stuff are actually here. John's up there doing a bunch of work on the routers and, and, um, but the actual handsets, they can pretend they're up and running if they want to. So that's been a long time coming.
Great, um, any other comments or, or questions for Carrie? Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and Michelle? Community relations report.
Michelle was having problems, um, logging in earlier. I don't know if she got kicked off again, but.
Hey, can you guys hear me now?
Hello.
Yay, thank you, Mandy, for unmeeting me. Um, yeah, so Carrie, the only thing, a couple of things I needed to add. Carrie talked to you about Zoe, so that's wonderful. Um, just following up on the patient portal enrollment. I believe they can also go directly onto the website and there's a direct enroll button for patient portal. Um, Carrie, tell me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that option is also there. Um, the other thing that.
Go to the KVH website, is that where they would go?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
The KVH website, there's a button for patient portal. And there should be a login button or an enroll button. Um, so for people that have not enrolled, they should be able to do that.
Good.
Um, let's see, the other thing.
I just looked up the website and, and Michelle is absolutely correct. There is a button there that says login to my account and/or create my, uh, create an account, so.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. Um, the other things I just wanted to follow up on, we did run our first, um, quote-unquote, social media contest. And that was just around, um, trying to get some engagement with people and what they were doing outside to stay healthy. People submitted pictures, um, to our Facebook page. And then based on the number of likes, we gave away a gift certificate of choice to a local health-related business. And we had our winner, we had thirty-four submissions, um, for that one. And our winner chose the recycle shop and was pretty excited about it, as was the recycle shop. So that was, that was fun to do. We are now exploring, um, an opportunity. What, what we're trying to do is put together another interactive social media campaign where we call for artwork from kids. Um, the concept, what we're thinking is K through five. And it would also be posted on our social media page that artwork would be designed for a face mask, which we would then put on face mask and donate to the local school districts for when school resumes. So that's the grand concept. We're still working out details and costs and numbers and things like that. But I'm kind of excited about that project. And then lastly, I don't know if anybody else has this on our radar, but I, I thought it was worth bringing up that our wonderful leader Julie is celebrating her four-year anniversary of coming to KVH this weekend. So I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you. There was one.
Nice. So that is it for me. Um, if you have any questions on any of the reports that I included this time around or anything else, let me know.
Yeah, Michelle, hi, can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Uh, this is mine. I mentioned this during the finance report. Um, I mean, I think it would be nice somehow for the board to express our appreciation for how employees handle, especially with the voluntary program and things. Uh, it could just be an email, it doesn't have to be some big thing, but just something like that, if I could, you guys.
I agree with you completely. And I think there can be a range of things. Um, like you said, I think we need to start with something like you just mentioned, an email, words of thought, that type of thing. Um, see how the financials play out. And then we're all talking about, you know, can we do some type of employee appreciation barbecue or something like that as time goes on? But we need to be sensitive to when, if, and where we're able to do it based on what phase we're in, what the finances are like and things like that. Um, but yeah, let's, do you want me to work with you and then reach out to the board on, just what we want to do right away?
When our illustrious president.
Okay.
So help us, uh, you know, I'm sure we'd all be happy to find our bodies.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Well, no, I'm just acknowledging the, like, the, um, duty scene and, and I don't know. These are long-term hospitals, like thirty plus years, right? The one of them, twenty plus years, the other two, something like that, long-term.
Very long-term, yep.
Uh, so just acknowledging what happened. Great, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Um, anything else?
Nothing else on my end.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Uh. I do not have an update for executive question. Uh, we were going into executive question under real estate and I don't have anything for. Yes. Are you allowed to come in for that and execute? My list is. The only other, I am going to be gone July third through the twelfth, I think. You're gone the same period of time and so is Mandy Olsen, so it's a free for all.
It's not a free for all.
It's not a free for all.
So, and then I wanted to get some feedback on the, on the work of the hybrid presentation here that we're going.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice to be back in person for as much as we could, just to get some of the nuances.
Yeah, I know, I, I think that Julie said there's a couple of the mics. They're going to be ordered, so, yeah, thanks for the help.
But, and, yeah, you actually, these are close-up mics. You really want more distant mics if you're going to mic a room like this.
Right.
Um, are we, are we jumping over the agenda, like the old business and the new business? Or are we still in the agenda?
We're still in, but I don't, I don't think there's any really old business.
Yeah, I have one comment on, on new business, which may be a really short thing when you tell me it's not legal or something like that. Are we to that point yet, should I?
Yes, we can go ahead.
Um, I just moved my mom and her significant other to this county. And so we got to go through the process of enrolling them in the Medicare Advantage system. And it, so the first time I encountered that, there appears to only be one group that offers typical Medicare Advantage here in this county. So it just got me thinking, since this hospital is grown and, and has direct relationships with a vast number of the providers in the community, a new fancy billing system through Cerner and whatnot, is it even legal to consider an entity like this offering their own Medicare Advantage plan? It, you know, it might be illegal, which means the conversation's over. If it's not illegal, is there any interest in discussing what that would mean? I don't like poor profit entities not having any competition. It, it's seeing what plan they came from to what they went to, there was a lot lacking.
Is it Humana?
Basically.
Humana is the only Medicare Advantage plan that is currently offered in Kiddas County. I, if I were counseling patients and advising, I would, I would strongly encourage to select re- regular Medicare as the primary with a, a good supplement. And, uh, as opposed to an Advantage plan. Because it, um, some of the Advantage plans have, uh, as long as you're in one spot, you're okay. But if you choose to travel or something like that, then you get into issues about whether you have coverage or you're out of network and things like that. But it just, life is simpler for patients if they have a, a regular Medicare as their primary. And as opposed to an Advantage plan.
The only thing, and again, I'm still getting educated on the Medicare side of things. Medicare itself doesn't seem to have any cap on worst-case scenarios, your, your obligation, your percentage in the Medicare. And in other words, if you had a million-dollar hospital bill for some reason, you're going to pay a certain percentage of that unlimited.
Like out-of-pocket.
If you're out-of-pocket, has no maximum, from the best I could discover in my research.
If you have a supplement, that takes care of it.
And, and so that's like a, uh, what do you call it, a, um, again, that's, that's an insurance that's only picking up worst-case scenario or it's not a catastrophic? It's, it's a catastrophic, it's not.
No, it's, it's, it's Medicare doesn't, it picks up, it's, it picks up the, you know, loudness. You know, there's usually a, a, a copay portion. It will pick up whenever that copay portion is.
Okay, I guess when I was researching, it wasn't clear, because Humana pops right up, you know, under the Advantage and says, Humana, you know, this is for this county, this is your choice. And then there's like twenty other insurance company-type things that said, well, we could offer you something also. But it wasn't clear how it really fit into the, into the system. It's incredibly confusing. Um, but it just made me think, Humana's clearly making, it's a profitable business to be in because it feels like Medicare picks up the worst of any situation. And Humana takes this juicy slice in the middle by taking monthly payments, charging you a lot of copays. You know, and, and if something really bad happens, it feels like it becomes Medicare's problem again. Again, best as I can understand how this insurance works, so.
I know, I, I was thinking that one, and then what actually, they, uh, they actually have an Advantage plan.
It's called Allied Health. And there's two of them, there's Yakima, Confluence developed a plan that's, it's called Allied Health or something like that. It's their, their own sponsored Medicare Advantage plan. And then in Yakima, there's another one that's called Sentinel Health. And it's their own, it's the, um, Yakima's own, um, Medicare Advantage plan. But I guess the drawbacks with both of those is if you live in Wenatchee, you just stay in Wenatchee, you're fine. But if you, if you, if you travel. One of the complaints that we've had is, uh, we have a, a gentleman that lives up in Upper County of Cleellum. And he bought that, uh, Confluence Allied Health plan. And he's, his claims are being denied when he comes here because he's going to a, a provider that's out of network. And so he's being forced to drive over the, over the pass to see a provider over there. And, you know, he, he didn't realize when he bought, when he did it.
Yeah.
But if I understand the difference, the Medicare Advantage plan takes the place of Medicare. A secondary plan is a wraparound plan. You have Medicare, but then you're out of pocket for what's secondary. And it's the secondary case. So there are two different arrangements. Um, and Humana is a very small, I mean, we have an unusually small Medicare Advantage population.
Yeah, I think there's only four or five hundred patients passing that in Yakima. And they're in Kiddas, but I will say that we've had our struggles for the KVHs and, uh, with the Humana. We've got those worked out now, but they're, they're, you're taught that they're for-profit. They behave like for-profit entities.
Yeah, yeah, I was not thrilled about, but we had to make a choice immediately because once she left her other county, her plan expired and I didn't want her to get caught with, you know, out of solution. So I figured this gets us to open enrollment the next couple of months, where we can research it more and just see if there are any other options that make more sense. Cause I would have preferred her just to stick with Medicare straightforward. But again, I was worried about worst-case scenario because it didn't seem to have caps on what you could be responsible for. But it sounds like what you're describing is a solution to that part of it, so.
Do our financial counselors help all make those choices?
They really don't. We've, we've tried to, there's a, uh, an organization called Sheba, kind of a, that provides some counseling. But I think one of the areas that we perhaps could help patients is, uh, is these questions come up and we have some experience and, um, I have fairly strong feelings about where people would be, be best served. And, uh, and, uh, we perhaps want to.
I, I think it'd be useful, again, between my in-laws, my neighbors, my mom and her significant other. We couldn't come to a consensus other than, you know, again, what's the worst-case scenario? And that's how we, we had our discussion, which is a really terrible way to have a, you know, medical coverage discussion rather than what is truly the best, uh, you know, way to get the, the care. And I like what you say, if you're, if you're traveling and you're locked into a local plan, you're a big disadvantage potentially. And so, um, again, I want to try to educate myself the next few months as we get ready for open enrollment. And I don't know if anybody else has any feelings about it. But I, I think to do a little, uh, to do something that could educate our local population on choices, I'd be all for something like that because it is a complex thing. It, it just, it astounds me how complex they've made, making sure you've made the correct choice for, for your situation, so.
There's only, there's only a couple insurance brokers here in town.
I, I just don't tend to trust the people selling the product because there's, because they have a, they have an agenda. And it's not me personally, it's, but they have a right to be in business. But in this case, as a consumer, it was very frustrating because we did talk to Sheba and, and again, they basically just led you right to Humana. And said, well, in your county, it's basically Humana if you want Medicare Advantage. And said, well, in your county, it's basically Humana if you want Medicare Advantage. Without being able to explain the nuances of how we could do Medicare plus the supplement plan you're talking about. And, and again, without getting accurate information, it felt risky. Cause since they came from Medicare Advantage, the simplest thing to do is just say, let's just do another Medicare Advantage until we learn more.
And it's so common in many, many markets that it's out.
And, and the type of those markets, Medicare Advantage, uh, market, uh, for us. Yeah. It was, we were on the phone for two hours just getting through the application process. And we had to do verbal testimonies. Yes, you've told me that, yes, we agreed to it. Even though again, I would have much preferred to have my lawyer on the phone, because they get into a bunch of legalese. I don't know what we agreed to, but hopefully we can get out of it and that's the part we can reach.
You just left the kidney.
Anything else that needs to be brought up? This will, this will take thirty seconds. Um, just so you all know, you know, Dr. Martin and I are on this President's Care Regional Triage Team for East of the Mountains. If hospitals ever get flooded and overwhelmed and triage isn't, you may, uh, advise on that. And I'm on this Committee on Governance, as you know, with the American Hospital Associations. We've been talking about housing and various things. And, uh, next week there's going to be a call about legislative priorities. The only reason I mention this is just so you know what's going on. And if you have any questions about any of this stuff, uh, for me or for Dr. Martin, we'd be happy to, uh, answer any. Thanks. Okay, thank you, Jared, thank you.
Happy for your joy.
Yeah, good, good.